All right, I would like to call the Interboro Board of School Directors Wednesday, public meeting on October sixteenth, twenty twenty four to order. Ms. Caldwell, we have a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chabon. Mr. Cleaver?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Willis?
Here.
Ms. Joseph? Mr. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Bagan? Mr. Goldsboro?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Chabon?
Here. Mr. Goldsberg, we have invocation and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry, I went with what Mr. Chabon said. Along here, if we would bow our heads, Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer, bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District, and grant to this board and the deliberations in seeking the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. May our deliberations be guided by the pursuit of excellence in education, ensuring the well-being of our students and the prosperity of our community. All this we seek for the betterment of education. Amen.
All right, next up, we have our committee reports with Ms. Berry.
Good evening. At the Newbury in the month of September, on September thirty, kindergarten academy families attended our annual open house. Families had a chance to meet their child's teacher in the little day. K.A. and pre-K students had a great first week with our pre-K students kicking off with the water ice event. On September tenth, K.A. and pre-K families attended back-to-school night. Families learned what their children will be doing in the classroom this year. The K.A. kicked off our PBIS program. Students went through different stations learning school expectations of being respectful, responsible, and safe.
In Glenwood School in the month of September, Inaugural School held water ice events and welcomed families and students. Glenwood held a back-to-school barbecue to welcome the families back. We kicked off the walk-a-thon with our, that will occur on October thirty-third. PBIS had their kickoff in early September. PBIS ambassadors held the lessons for our elementary students. On September twelfth, we welcomed our families for back-to-school night.
Norwood's Home and School held their first meeting, and it was attended by many. Home and School is offering a lot of different things this year. Birthday grams, Joe Cordyce, chunk retreat, and more to come in the near future. On September eleventh, our students wore red, white, and blue to support Paper Day at that. On Saturday, September fourteenth, our eighth grade, eighth grade class had their annual car wash. Our eighth grade held their annual month sale, and it was very successful. Eighth grade also hosted a welcome-back dance on Friday, September thirty. Many students attended, and lots of fun was had. Our middle school students discussed an important site called Safe to Say Something with Ms. Sokolowski, our middle school counselor. Each grade met separately and discussed the importance of this site. Our second grade students had a fun day on Thursday, September twenty-sixth, celebrating Johnny Apesey. The students were asked to wear red or green to honor Johnny Apesey. On Friday, September twenty-seventh, our students wore autumn colors for a PBIS spirit day. Norwood's Journalism Club started in September, and several middle school students are going to be working on several different events, yearbook design, writing articles for paper, photography, and video production. On Monday, September thirtieth, our elementary students who turned in three gold coins were able to wear different types of hats. Many students participated in this reward, and it was fun seeing all of the different hats the students wore. We had school picture day on Wednesday, October second. Our staff and students looked wonderful, and we are excited to see the pictures when they come in.
Prospect Park. Wow, what an exciting month we had in September at Prospect Park. The PBIS team really knocked it out of the park with a fun event to kick off the year and introduce our new P-Bucks. It was great to see so many students embracing our expectations of being positive, productive, and proud. I am thrilled to report that many students have already earned P-Bucks for showcasing our core values. We also held our first dress-down day for the video game day, where both students and staff proudly sported their favorite game shirts. The energy was fantastic. As we move into October, I'm looking forward to more excitement and events lined up for us.
Tencum, to start this school year off on the right foot, Tencum Home and School hosted its annual back-to-school water ice to welcome our students, teachers, and families to the new school year. Families had the opportunity to meet their children's teachers and purchase Tencum swag. On September third, the new school year began for students in grades two through eight. First grade students and their parents attended first grade orientation, which included an introduction to the teachers, the tour of the school, and a snack provided by our Home and School for all students and their families. On September sixteenth, our Home and School catalog fundraiser began. Home and School held the first meeting of the school year. Fall homes were also for sale and were distributed at back-to-school night. Students came wearing their best smiles and favorite outfit for picture day on September twentieth. March Sale Photography did a fabulous job taking individual and class photos. On September twenty-third, Tencum School hosted our week-long Scholastic Book Fair. All students had the opportunity to select books, bookmarks, pens, pencils, and posters. Thank you to Mrs. McLaughlin for another successful book fair. The month ended on a high note with back-to-school night on September twenty-sixth. Back-to-school night was very well-attended, and our families were able to learn about their children's places, visit with our community programs, vendors, and once again had the opportunity to purchase Tencum School t-shirts, sweatshirts, and merchandise.
At the high school, Mr. Grant and Mr. Meby were force development coordinators at Anboro High School. This is a Miss Jones financial literacy class to deliver career exploration lessons as part of the new Bucks work program. These sessions are designed to help students become career-ready by, by the time they graduate. The Bucks High School football team had their homecoming game on September twenty-seventh with a win over Archbishop Carroll, thirty-eight to twenty-six. The homecoming dance was held on September twenty-eighth in the high school gym. Students looked wonderful and had a great time. Student Council held a workshop on September twenty-third to introduce student council jobs and learn more about each other. Freshman mentors began visiting freshmen on Monday, September ninth. They've been successful in helping the first-year students find their way through the high school. Back-to-school night was held on September nineteenth. Many parents and guardians came to meet teachers and showed interest in joining Home and School. Hall of Fame Assembly was held on October second. Many of our retirees made their way through the new main office at the high school and loved the new upgrades. That is all we have for the report.
All right. Thank you, Ms. All right, next up, we have a presentation for eSports club. We have Ms. Rogino and Ms. Spinnaker. Mr. Spinnaker.
Sorry, I know the long hair.
So, great evening. I would like to introduce Mr. Spinnaker. I am really excited for you to see the video we put together of all the work that the kids and Mr. Spinnaker have done over the past year and beginning of this school year to get eSports up and running. Everything that you're gonna see tonight is because of him and all that he put into doing this. I had the pleasure of helping to build some of these computers with these kids, and they are the most amazing group of students. They're excited. They were there all hours. They, we had to kick them out. But, um, let me take.
All right, so thank you for giving a few moments of your time tonight, everyone. This is our video I put together using some technology here. This was the start of our first meetings last year. We had enough funding to get our Nintendo Switches. And then we finally were able to get our pieces of the computers to put together. So, as we were talking about, we built the computers together with the kids and the computer department, technology department. And it was all hands-on experiences, so a few of the kids were able to get the computers to do it off, and that was successful at that point. So, we were able to end the year with functional computers, and then the tech department fixed them to get them ready on that. This is Newen University. We took a field trip there, and they actually have an eSports degree that you can earn now. Yes, you can go to college for league games. And we weren't competing yet online in a league, so I wanted to give the kids an opportunity to still compete within our school. So, we did a Smash Brothers tournament and a Mario Kart tournament. See the winners there. So, this is a little bit of what we still need to do. We still need a few different helpers in our eSports program. So, it's not just for students to play. It's also about to build different skills. These are some of the games that we're competing in currently. And, uh, I'm joining the team. These are some of the other Delco schools involved in our league, but again, it's all Pennsylvania. We're in the Pennsylvania Scholastic Electronic Sports League. So, I have our room. We call it the Buccaneer Bay. So, uh, that's our place. So, a few things to tell you. Again, this is the second really full year that we have this going. There we go. So, again, the first year, just trying to get the funding situation figured out, and then finally, we started getting that together, opened the, the club up to the students to come, and we had roughly about twenty students participating in the first year with just the Nintendo Switches. And now, at this point, I'm proud to say we have at least thirty-six members of students and growing. I just had three kids come in today that renewed the school, and they love the idea of having our eSports. And, you know, it's a place for every student, no matter where you are, to come and enjoy your time together. We do have people that are competing, and they are the main teams, but again, you can come help practice, and we're filling some of these other positions we have. So, students getting involved with social-emotional learning while we're there together. Like I said, they can go to college and earn a degree in eSports, so this is kind of a window in there. And we are in, like I was saying before, the Pennsylvania Scholastic Electronic Sports League, which is out of the Chester Community, or CCIU. And it's a very nice league so far, and they're also growing. If you are a school that makes it to the finals, they're hosting that competition in Harrisburg University. So, I hope to get our team there. It's not happening in this particular season, but this is almost like a real sport because now, as I found out, we have three seasons we'll be playing in. We have our current winter, we have, I'm sorry, current fall, winter's coming, and then our spring season. So, lots of opportunities with different games, and students are able to come in and have fun with us. So, we're working every day from Monday through Thursday, from two-thirty till five. So, we're there having fun together, and thank you so much for giving the opportunity. When I was interviewed, they said, "What do you think about eSports?" And I said, "Well, I love video games, so let's make it happen." So, again, thank you so much for being able to provide that for my senior students, and we're gonna keep going.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for dedicating your time. We all stay out here, you know, it takes one adult, you know, to change the trajectory of a kid's life. So, those four, those thirty-six students that are building that relationship with you as well as the other kids, that's awesome. Because it, you need to find something that makes school. School's tough sometimes, get through that seven-thirty to two-thirty time slot. So, looking forward to something at the end of the day is awesome. So, thank you, thank you, Mr. Rogino, for your time and efforts helping our kids.
Anytime. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have public comment. Mr. Goldberg, we have any public comments?
We do. We do. We have Amy Ferris from Prospect Park on, uh, speaking on graduation.
Is this her standing?
This is our first? Maybe first public comment of the new building. Ms. Evans may have spoken before, but you can say it wherever you want.
So, I had something written out, and then Mr. Litz sent an email, so bear with me for a second here. Okay, my name is Amy Ferris. I reside at eleven-twenty-two Pennsylvania Avenue, Prospect Park. I know that there's an agenda item that has since been removed in regards to graduation of Interboro High School, being moved back to Newman College. I also understand that a Zoom meeting is being set up for the current senior parents to discuss this further. Even though this has been removed from the agenda, we now know that this is a discussion among the board, and a decision will likely be made shortly. Firstly, a Zoom meeting is impersonal and inappropriate to have this discussion. This needs to be a public meeting in this format of public comments, not just a presentation. So, I urge you to hold a meeting at Interboro High School or in Kindergarten Academy because a Zoom meeting will not capture the essence of the community in agreement or disagreement with this decision. A Zoom meeting is a crutch, and it should not be used for public opinion or discussion meetings. Secondly, I'm also expressing my disagreement to move the graduation ceremony back to Newman. I know Newman may be convenient due to the weather, but it lacks Buck pride community. We want the nostalgia at the field. We want to celebrate as a community together. I'm also asking that the board and Mr. Litz show us the reasons for moving this back to Newman. Financially, apparently, it's sixteen thousand dollars to have it there, and while I know it's not zero, I'd like to know what the cost is to have it at the football field. After reading Mr. Litz's email sent an hour ago, we want a breakdown of all the costs he mentioned in his email to hold it at the field. One of the public concerns on social media is the elderly and physically impaired. Newman is not very accommodating, whereas the field has enough room to spread people out, wheelchair accessibility, seating, et cetera. I would like to know how and why Newman is better accommodations than the field is. Mr. Litz's email may say accommodating, but the community of the families before us say otherwise. We want the reasons, the comparisons, and the breakdowns as to why we would move this. Show us the argument written out. For many years, the graduation was in front of a high school, and it was great. After COVID, the football field brought back the community field to the graduation ceremony. So, we're asking you to reconsider or to consider just keeping it off the table because we want it at the field. It's Buck pride to the end, not the nights. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. Is there any other public comment?
That's all.
Um, I just, in regard to the Zoom meeting, I know Mrs. Riley was trying to piggyback off of the, the senior parent night. I'm not sure, you know, I think that the Zoom meeting was already scheduled, so that is why we just piggyback on it and take all your comments and concerns. I think, you know, it was expressed in the emails that were sent. We are just, like, like you said, reassessing and seeing, you know, where to go, try to get opinions and viewpoints from everybody, not just the ones that emailed, but, you know, there were other, there were some people that emailed on the alternative. So, just, we wanted to get an opinion from all stakeholders, and that came across through the emails.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
Response tonight. So, I know that the November sixth parent meeting is for the senior parent committee. There's like twenty people in charge of those Zoom meetings. But Zoom meetings, to me, are for planning. To have a discussion about something in the school. You guys all know how I feel about Zoom meetings, especially during COVID. I kind of see match you guys a lot about that, too. I do think it needs to be in person for something that big.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming and sharing your concerns. All right, no other public comments. Can we move on to number five?
Yes, motion five point zero one, that following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four be approved. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven, zero. Mr. Grupio, solicitor's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, members of the public, good evening. Last month, I had the opportunity to attend the PSBA school law seminar. It is done usually twice a year in person. This meeting was at the Kalahari Resort with, along with the PSBA annual convention that they have for board members and other vendors and other areas of the school. The school law presentation was fairly dynamic, as dynamic as school law can be. And the theme was "It's Not a Problem Until It's a Problem," which highlighted some of the very diverse types of cases that are becoming to, are beginning to germinate in the court system on issues that are small and isolated, but then get applied to students as a whole based on one set of fact patterns. And there was some discussion about PSBA and the association of school solicitors being more active in terms of monitoring cases from different areas of the state in order to be a bit more homogeneous. So, the fact patterns that may emerge in some rural areas that are not necessarily similar to the day-to-day, day-to-day school day for Interboro and some of the Interboro community members that we have to, to watch as those fact patterns then go to court and could then result in rules and case law that we have to follow. They decided to, the organization has decided to monitor significantly a lot of the Supreme, Pennsylvania Supreme Court cases and a few of those going up to the court, along with paying attention to a number of Third Circuit Court of Appeals that have to do with, with the conduct of meetings, the rights of folks, board members, members of the public, the role of the solicitor in those types of conversations. Those are all cases that are starting to come forward and that we're taking a look at. With regard to Interboro specifically, as, as per usual, we review the agreements that are on the agenda and deal with any policies and questions that come up, and sometimes they are very varied, and sometimes they are, they are a tad bit calmer. I think a lot of the issues that we had to deal with during COVID that Ms. Ferris mentioned, you know, some of those issues, we are now three, four years in the rearview mirror and, and back to, back to a rhythm, including the rhythm with the students, the teachers, parents, as well as the legal community. School districts don't start fast. They don't stop fast. They don't turn fast. COVID put all of that on its, on its ear in making decisions that were, that were unprecedented very quickly. And my point is, things are beginning to slow down back in the court world as well. You're not seeing as many of those issues, and a lot of the special education issues related to COVID have finally begun to smooth down. That would be my report for this, this October. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Grupio. Next up, Mr. Goldsberg.
And motion seven point zero one, that the treasurer's report for the month ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four be approved. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven, zero. Next one.
Uh, motion seven point zero two, that the fund disbursements in the amount of fifteen million, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and six cents be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven, zero. All right, next up, we have our committee reports. Mr. Willis, do you have legislative update?
I do. I do the legislative committee net on Wednesday, October ninth, at seven-thirty a.m. We have a summary. The first Senate bill number seven-nine-five is Lifeline Scholarship slash pass. This bill was laid on the table in the Senate on September sixteenth. What that means is it can be considered a later date. So, the vouchers that that bill was talking about are still in play. It hasn't been put away. Senate Bill ninety-six, along with House Bill two-zero-one-one, Removing Lead from Drinking Water in Schools, was recently discussed in the House hearing on lead and drinking water. Both bills would require to install filters on all drinking water sources and require maintenance program for the filters. Senate Bill one-one-seven-six, Cash Entry at School Events. As amended, would require school entities to charge admission fees to school-sponsored activities to accept cash as a form of payment. School entities could accept other forms of payment and could refuse to accept cash in nominations that significantly exceeds the amount of the fee. This bill would take effect sixty days after enactment. It was passed by the Senate on October seventh, forty-seven to one. House Bill nineteen-ninety, Seizure Recognition. As amended, would require the school nurse to complete an online or in-person course approved by the Department of Health regarding management of a student with seizures. That includes information about seizure recognition, a seizure action plan, related first aid. A professional employee whose duties include direct contact with students would be required to complete an online or in-person course regarding awareness of a student with seizures. That includes information about seizure recognition and related first aid. The requirement would apply beginning of the, in the two thousand and twenty-four and twenty-five school year and every two years thereafter, reported as committed from the Senate Education, September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. House Bill two-four-five-zero, PSERS Membership. Would exclude new PSBA employees from PSERS membership, but would not affect PSBA employees who are already PSERS members. Third consideration and passage in the House, one hundred and eight to ninety-four on October one, two thousand and twenty-four. The next meeting of the Legislative Committee is November thirteenth at seven-thirty a.m., and that will be done remotely. And this concludes my update.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Goldsberg, we have a public meeting.
Yes, I do believe Mrs. Riley sent out an update. I'm not sure if you all got the update without that.
Are you getting those emails from Delaware County Community College directly?
No.
No. Okay. I don't know if it was the same thing. I, there was an email that came through, but I haven't got the update. Well, thankfully, Mrs. Riley sent that out, so either she'll send it out or I'll send it out. There was an update that went out, and with things that are going on at Delaware County Community College, some of the current programs that are going on, they hosted a, a, a bunch of, of police officers and district attorneys and talking about organized retail crime that is happening in the area and what they're doing to, to, to work on that. There are also a, a number of, of other programs that they're, that they're looking at and starting to run on campus. So, it's a pretty good update. There's a lot that's in there that you can look over. It's not, it's not extensive. It's just, it's just a little bit to look over. And, and there's another reminder that was at the bottom of that, that there is a dinner for the sponsoring school district appreciation dinner that's gonna be on, I do believe it's Wednesday, October thirtieth, at six p.m. at the Marple Campus Cafeteria. I can vouch for the food being very good, and, and it's good to hear from the people that are on campus and getting an idea of the different programs that they're offering and, and what they're, what they're doing currently on campus. So, it's, it's very insightful. Luckily enough, I have a meeting right after that also to get an update, liaison updates. So, we're gonna be choosing, we're gonna be interviewing for trustee's positions on that date. But they're looking for RSVPs for that meeting by the nineteenth. March is, oh, that was, yeah, it's RSVP. The invite sent via the email on nine-nineteen from the president's office, so.
Follow up tomorrow.
Yeah, okay. Do you need to know who's going, or can you?
Can you email me?
Okay, all right.
We'll follow up.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
All right. Other than that, that concludes my, my report.
All right, Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Mr. Harris.
Good evening, everyone. The Delaware County Intermediate Board of Directors met on October second. Approve a contract with Chi-Chester School District for DCI to provide program administrations for language, education, instruction. Approve a contract with DePaul participants, School Districts, for frontline education and professional learning management systems from July first, twenty twenty-four, to June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Chi-Chester, Garner Valley, Interboro, Pendelco, Southeast Delco, Springfield, Upper Darby, and Longford, Swatmore. Approve a contract with Marple School District to, for the DCI to provide teacher coaching and consultation to support low incident classrooms. Approve a contract with Pendelco School District for the DCI to provide English, language, instruction, and assessments. Provide a contract with Bristol Township School District for the DCI to provide management security services. security services. The next board meeting will be November 6th at 6:45. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Evans, Capital Improvement Committee.
Okay, we did, our, our last Capital Improvement Committee meeting was 9:24, well-attended. It was mostly, time was mostly taken up with high school update. And I did attend a change order meeting here on October 1st for any change orders related to the admin renovation. And essentially, it's like a negotiation period where in our representing, our engineer representative, he pretty much discusses in front of us with the contractors involved any change orders or likelihood of any payment. Was very confident that no payments will go to the contractor that aren't carefully scrutinized by Mr. Galloway, myself, and our engineering firm. And even if, if we did pay, it's, it's still all well under the cap, contingency cap that we had on the program. So it's mostly a matter of finalizing any of the punchless items on the building here, as well as, you know, finalizing those change orders that will be covered and those that were denied. That was on October 1st. Then we had a construction meeting on October 3rd with, with the contractors. That Henry, where you know, provided a high school update with, and Steve Garner with patent and spackling still going on, frames and glass going in, new bathrooms being completed, some of the roof, roof work and canopy lighting was being done. A lot of the case work is going in now, now that they got, the majority of the buildings closed up, they're starting to put all the cabinetry in, as well as finishing up and painting the drywall. We are going to work with the mechanical contractor to maybe push up the nurses suite to get that done more complete with bathrooms before waiting for the next phase. Ceiling, the ceiling frames were gone in in the kitchen, some of the ceiling tiles were in the cafeteria. The Aphone is now working at the front door, and we lost contact with the switchgear manufacturer after the storm, but a letter has returned from the switchgear manufacturer saying that they had lost power at the Siemens plant, and they apologized for the delay in the last two pieces of switchgear. Well, Mr. Galloway, Mr. Garner, and the engineers and electrical contractor are trying to work out, are trying to research the possibility of cutting over the power that was for the old kitchen and use it for the new kitchen if we have to wait too long for the last two pieces of switchgear. So to try to keep us on target for the next phase change in the middle of November. So Mr. Galloway had tasked the electrical contractor with looking into the load caps for the new cafeteria as compared to the old cafeteria, and maybe couldn't just be a matter of on a weekend, cutting power away from the old cafeteria and tying it under the new cafeteria. We're not sure that that's going to work yet, but that's, we're looking into. All right? And then I think we're voting today on the funding for the Glen O'Fly ground, and that was money that was already in the capital program as well. And that wraps me up. And then our next meeting will be Tuesday, the 22nd, for Capital Improvement Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Before we go on to number 10, I do want to backtrack. I skipped on to the second page. I missed eight correspondence, which we do not have any correspondence.
We do not. Sorry.
All right. Ms. Croupio, y'all will be in first, given only a minute. All right. At this point, you both can leave, or you're welcome to stay.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
I got homework, sorry. We like to do that.
All right. Number 10, Mr. Goldsboro.
From the Office of Personnel, motion that the following personnel items be approved, 10.01 on page 2 to 10.07 on page 5. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next motion.
Motion number 10.01, with regret, please accept the following retirement of Barbara Hoffman Dixon, 10-month secretary at Prospect Park School, with 23 years of service in the district. Be approved for retirement effective March 28th, 2025. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Just real quick, I want to thank Ms. Hoffman for all of her service, 23 years. In the front office is, is not for the faint of heart, so I want to thank her for all of her service there, and she will be greatly missed. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next motion, Mr. Goldsboro.
From the Office of Curriculum Instruction, motion that the following items be approved, 12.01 on page 5 to 12.06 on page 6. Thank you.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next motion.
From the Office of Special Education and Student Services, motion that the following items be approved, 13.01 to 13.05, all located on page 6. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next motion.
From the Office of Technology, motion that the following items be approved, 14.01 on page 6 to 14.05 on page 7. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next motion.
From the Office of Finance, motion 15.01, that the Board of School Directors approve the purchase of a 2021 Thomas 72-passenger bus at a cost of $85,000 and a 2020 Thomas 32-wheelchair bus, passenger bus at a cost of $78,000 paid from bond funds. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next motion.
For capital improvement, motion that the following items be approved, 16.01 to 16.04, all located on page 7. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Just real quick comment. Mr. Evans, I just want to thank you for your due diligence, you know, attending all those meetings on behalf of the board with Mr. Galloway. And, you know, just when you give your reports how, you know, in detail, you have all the facts provided for the, the public and for the board. So, you know, when we do these change orders and whatnot, I have absolute faith in you, you know, providing and making sure that our tax dollars are being spent effectively. So I just wanted to make sure you heard that.
Thank you.
All right?
My pleasure.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. All right. Mr. Goldsboro, next motion.
All right. Motion number 17, that the Board of School Directors approve Bernardette Riley to attend the 2025 AASA National Conference in New Orleans from March 5th through the 8th, 2025, at a cost not to exceed $1,955 to be paid from district funds. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next motion.
Motion number 18, that the Board of School Directors approve Bernardette Riley, Valerie Ackman, Robert Sonnet, and Edward Losinski to attend the 2025 PDE Data Summit in Hershey, PA on March 24th through 20, the 26th, 2025, at a cost not to exceed $3,200 to be paid from district funds. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next motion, Mr. Goldsboro.
Motion, motion number 19, that the Board approve the revision of the 2024-2025 pre-K calendar. This is a roll call. Motion.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Thank you, Mr. Goldsboro. Ms. Caldwell, please add a, a roll call.
Thank you. Mr. Cleaver?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shebans?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. All right. Last motion, Mr. Goldsboro.
Motion number 20, that the Board of School Directors approve the revision of the following policies and categories of local board procedures and operations. The first one is local board procedures and the fine correct. The naming classification is changing because of the address, our location and address. And the second one is operations under school calendar. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Is there any old business before the board? Any new business? All right. Hearing none. Mr. Riley, I guess here for you.
Thank you very much. The Interboro Board of School Directors and Administrators would like to congratulate the 2024 Hall of Fame recipients. These inductees were announced at the Interboro Hall of Fame Ceremony that took place on October 2nd in Interboro High School. This year's recipients are David Shaw, alumni of Prospect Park High School Class of 1943. David was an Interboro fighter pilot during World War II and a member of the Tuskegee Airman Squadron. Edward Campbell, an alumni, Interboro High School Class of 1993, businessman, founder of East Coast Advisory, traveling nationwide to educate and advise unions on financial stability. Lois Sauer, alumni, Interboro High School Class of 1972, active member of the Prospect Park community, including but not limited to Prospect Park Youth Club and the Prospect Park Beautification Committee, as well as fundraising for the Interboro Hometown Heroes Program and Reeds Across America. Peggy Wagner, Interboro High School Business Teacher, dedicated 35 years of service. Peggy initiated the partnership with Franklin Federal Credit Union, opening the first student-run branch at Interboro High School. She also established the Junior Career Initiative, which allowed juniors to explore careers at Umin University and hear from keynote speakers from our area. And Lois Snyder, dedicated 16-year administrator, having served as principal of Norwood School and kindergarten academy, also as curriculum director and superintendent. She is the founder of the Edward J. Snyder Foundation, which raised funds that went directly back to students and families in need here in Interboro School District. Congratulations to all of the recipients. The High School College Fair is being held tomorrow, Thursday, October 17th, with over 50 colleges representatives that will be participating, speaking with parents and students about post-secondary options. And I hope to see many of our parents and students in attendance. And finally, the Interboro High School Theater is proudly presenting their fall play, Puffs the Two Act Edition, on November 21st, 22nd, 23rd at 7:00, with a matinee also on November 23rd at 2:00. Tickets are going on sale the week of October 28th. Puffs, and I did have to look this up, is a 2015 original comedy play by New York-based playwright Matt Cox. The play is a parody on the Harry Potter series by J.K. Rowling. Thank you. Excited to see it.
All right. Board members, anyone have any comments?
I'm cooking, Alice, but if anyone's interested, until 9:00 tonight at 5050s, if you want to go, Norwood School 8th Grade Fundraiser, feel free to go and get some food if you want to, and just mention the Norwood School 8th Grade Fundraiser, and part of the proceeds will go towards the 8th grade class at Norwood.
Just a comment, just wanted to recognize Mr. Bill Galloway, because all the construction that is going on in the district, you know, not only major projects, but there's also rooms being done, there's buildings being painted, there's this building had to be completed. And he pretty much rides herd on all of that, and especially the high school activities as well. And really, most of the information I get is from Mr. Galloway. He attends those meetings as well, and Mrs. Riley. So it's, it's definitely an extra level of stress and, and work on both their parts to live with this construction for the next two years as well. So just wanted to thank them both. I just show up and bark a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Thank you, Mr. Galloway. All right. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, hearing none. Please visit the Interboro School District website at www.interbordSD.org for further information on the Interboro Board of School Director meetings listed below. On Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024, the Capital Improvement Committee will be held virtually at 6:30 p.m. On Monday, November 4th, 2024, a finance committee meeting with the GPO meeting immediately following will be held virtually seven, at 7:00 p.m. The next work session will be held virtually on Monday, November 18th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. The next public meeting will be held at the Administration Building on Wednesday, November 20th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. Meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.